Let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a four up, so we'll move on. Public comments, please.
You know, while I get through the last thirty seconds or something, you can leave. My name is Robert Boge, citizen of the United States of America. I'm also a Nigger County resident. Last time I spoke before county board here in the study session, I mentioned some of our history. I'll refresh your memory once again. Nigger County Airport history, van nursing mothers with their babies. Ran my daughter-in-law from the airport. It was Jimmy Wells. You blocked hangars so my son couldn't deliver airplanes. You plotted to have a lockout on January first. You refused to accept his rent payments. And in December, after my son's fatal crash, and after two planes were firebombed at the airport, you decided to have a meeting and hold Jimmy Wells accountable. He resigned in that meeting and nothing was done. And then you wrote a letter of commendation. Nothing was done. Everything that Jimmy did, nothing was done. By the way, since the airport recently, the reward posters keep disappearing. I guess people out there don't think we need those things up there. Since then, you hired Jimmy, or Jerry Griffin, in August. Year going August. He sent his resume. He was employed by a flight school. He did have a flight school at Fort Pierce, Florida. He wasn't. He said he was a mechanic for that five years. He wasn't. If he had been certified to work on airplanes, that'd been great. He isn't. And if he hadn't worked on airplanes, the flight school would've had records and somebody would've had to sign off for his work because he isn't certified. Both counts, lies. Talked about being mechanic for the Hassan Ghofari, mechanic that worked on airplanes for three years. Again, he didn't work on airplanes because if he had of, he'd have had a certificate to do so, or the owner of that business would've had to sign off for it. And he didn't. We had a covert investigator here, Barney Fife, that looked into it, and apparently was unable to confirm what I found quite easily to discover. Then we had a grant application. It was halted because it was all full of lies. There are not thirty-five airplanes at the Nigger County Airport. Never were. Met a board member, Jeff White, say, hey, anytime I can invest sixty thousand dollars and get eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars in benefit, I'm all for it. Well, maybe he's talking about his personal finances, but I'm a taxpayer. I don't like that idea. I don't think just because it's on sale, you should buy it. Today, today the county owes nearly a half million dollars. Y'all know that. Has a courthouse emergency repair to their roof, which are temporary. That means long-term picture is an expensive roof. Somebody mentioned boilers for the courthouse. I know those things aren't free. We have jail problems and we have other financial obligations. Why are we continuing with the airport project? It isn't needed. The facts show it's not needed, it's not warranted, and the documents you submitted have flaws in it. Last thing I want to say is the last thing I said last time I stood here. You guys have taken something that you shouldn't have, you need to turn it back in. If you've been getting health benefits, your health insurance has been paid for, and you haven't followed the process and the procedure to do that, you can bet that's gonna be around for a while. I guess one of the things I skipped over here on my list was the illegal meeting that was, took place in December of two thousand thirteen. And the attorney general said, no, you guys did something bad here. It was an illegal meeting. Doesn't count. I've asked for board members to refund the twenty-five bucks plus their travel fees. I was under the impression Mr. Bruner had done that, but I was mistaken. I was corrected that not a single board member returned twenty-five bucks to the county for an illegal meeting that never should've happened. I think it says a lot about board members, the integrity of what's going on here in Nigger County. I'd like for you guys to just do the right thing. You should be taking insurance still. If you've got an employee at the airport, why let him be the flag bearer for the county? If you've got three people on the airport advisory board that don't have the Kahuna's to fire him, maybe they should leave. Jeff White, Carl Farnum, Mike Helsley. The only reason Jerry Griffin's at that airport today is because you folks stand behind him and protect him. He should've been terminated a long time ago. That's all I got.
Thank you. It's up to you to start this dialogue.
I'll do it some other time.
You're welcome to speak. I'm just saying how that does this.
No, I just, we got that book a couple weeks ago with the, Dr. Guide to County Government Law, United Counties Council of Illinois. Page eight kind of explains something that probably much of them should read.
We'll discuss that with them later. All right, we'll start with committee reports. Are you, I see a lot of activity going on there, Andy.
They've got, they basically got the slate part done, at least that they know of. That's kind of, he said it kind of like a small rain, a candidacy, because some of them, you can't visually see what, where the holes are. I mean, some of them you could, they patched those. We went up, Jeff was with me that one day, and we went up, and you could, when it was raining, and we could see where a lot of them were, and they seem to think they got most of them done. Gutters are, some of them are really pretty bad shape, but they're in the process. That's what they're gonna concentrate on this week. And I'm hoping, when I talk to Rich, who is the engineer from, who's Jamie Elston, I'm hoping that they will have enough time this week to work on the flat roads above the, above the doors. All of those seem to be leaking pretty bad. And anyway, they're doing pretty well right now. One thing I do want to, and I'm trying, and I talked to Rich about this, and he said this is a little outside his expertise, what to do about the flu on the border. And he's going to talk to some mechanical engineers. He had a way to go to the end of last week, and he said hopefully he can get back to me this week and give me some recommendations on what we can do as far as. I've looked at the power van. I've been told that that will work. I'm a little concerned about the ability of that thing to perform. That's a lot of hot flue gas to put that close to the bottom of the, or around the ground. So anyway, we're looking at that too. Other than that.
Is there a current outside issue with that?
Yeah. And, yeah, and it's, I mean, if you've ever gone by that place on a cold night, it almost looks like a place on fire, there's so much coming out. I don't know whether, in fact, you said people had called you a couple times and said they thought the courthouse was on fire. That's just because of the gases, so I, you know, you release something that, that hot, that much near the ground, first of all, you're gonna kill the shrubs and things around there, and anybody.
Can that be sleeved?
Uh, and gone up outside? Yeah. That's kind of, that's what I'm kind of tossing around right now. In fact, if you did that now, either way, you would sleeve it. It would be a double, double wall stainless pipes, what you put up through there. But I'd like to get away from the one going snaked up through the stairwell and through the roof. Maybe something that comes out the side and goes up. He said, I'll get a couple professional opinions here, hopefully this week, what we do, because it's getting, it's getting close to cold weather, so.
Andy, did he, were you talking about, maybe that's what you're, when you and I looked at that a lot, we have a lot of it, where our water is coming up and under, is that what you meant? Like, is there anything that they can do for that right now?
Well, yeah, they've got some, it's a material, it's a, you paint an adhesive on to, basically you kind of clean up the area, paint an adhesive. Hopefully, there's enough metal on sides. A lot of it's gone in the bottom, as far as the guttering. And they paint that adhesive on, then you have this stick, stick material they lay in there.
And he thought that would, because I didn't know if that was a part of, I thought that's what a part of what they were looking at, kind of, too.
Yes.
Because that's, maybe we were talking about that flat part above.
No.
No, that's a different, that's why I wanted to make sure I was on the right.
No, you're talking about.
We're getting a lot of moisture, you know.
Coming through those holes. What's happened.
Underneath that backside.
A couple of them, I got up and we looked at, and what's happened is, I think it has gotten plugged at some point, and in the wintertime, then the, yeah, it blew that pipe apart. And that's where a lot of it is leaking out and down through. So it's gonna have to take, and I talked to Rich about this, you're gonna have to take and cut that area out, put a new pipe in. And he seems to think you can take and cut like a foot-by-foot area out, put a pipe in, and then restructure that around there. So.
I mean, that, if we could do that, that stops a lot of water from going in that building. I mean, we've got, we've got multiple places like that. Biggest one is probably by Kerry's office.
Right. That one is. Well, that, and that's the big one that I, you know, we were trying to figure out where that was coming from. I crawled through that window, looked out, and could see where it's, it's actually frozen and blowing that pipe apart, so. And he's talking about cutting a foot area out, re-putting a new piece of pipe through there, and then rebuilding that around there. He seemed to think that that can be done. So, it's kind of one of those wait-and-see, you don't know what you're into until you're torn apart, and kind of, he seemed to think they can be fixed. So, I guess that's all I got right now.
Any questions? Dan?
Animal shelter meeting tomorrow at twelve. We change our meetings every three months. And the bids on the Health Department replacing the HVAC should come in next week sometime, so we'll probably have to, some type of meeting or wait until our regular meeting to bring up and see which one we want to accept. So, it's only two right now, I think that's picked up the bids.
Want to do your back end?
I think we gave them a two-week extension. They requested it, especially signal engineering, so I think it's the fourteenth.
That's our board meeting, the fourteenth.
Yeah, so, we may, well, we wouldn't have time to decide which one we wanted, so we'll have a meeting with Health Department first and pick one.
Is that our decision and what they?
I don't know. It's not, so.
It's not, yeah.
So we'll set it up with the board and decide, because we're paying for it anyway.
Right.
Right. Okay, good, so I don't have to worry about the regular.
Unless somebody has a question.
Well, I mean.
I don't think we're.
They basically decide, and then they just let us know which one they're going?
Yeah, they just let us know through.
Yeah, but then we'll work on together.
Right, through him. They report what they're doing.
Okay. It's gonna be probably January before you need to start. I hope it's not really good. Maybe you're gonna hold up for a year, I don't know.
Have they got a plan on how to keep it warm?
Basically, no.
I mean, the system now will?
It, it works, yeah.
Oh.
They have trouble with it, but it still works, so we may just wait till next spring to them start, springtime.
Yeah, like, and old prices.
You don't have to get somebody in there to do some work on it, because winter, I think.
Well, there's a leaf, there's a, we'll see what happens.
Thanks. Carl?
Did you get that, Augie, that, our response to the union?
Yes, I sent it.
Off to Mr. Jarvis?
Yes, I have not heard back yet.
Okay. Are we gonna, is there gonna be a, Mike asked, is there gonna be a sheriff's meeting? Should we do the budget and do what you need to do, or is the sheriff just gonna submit advised budget, or?
Since our meeting last, whenever, last week I have talked.
Yeah.
Yeah, and have you got, had a chance to redo your budget?
Yeah, down, pretty close to.
Okay. So you've got it, or you can, if we set up a meeting for sometime this week to discuss it, look at it? And what do you guys, what do you want to do as far as, you just want the finance committee to look at it, or you want the sheriff's committee?
No, I think the sheriff's committee, and then you submit it, and then we'll review it. Review it at the meeting, and in total, you know, we can rework the total budget, and then we can submit that, resubmit that to the board in lieu of what the changes have been made. And then the board could look at it. We'll have two more meetings. We'll have the regular meeting plus a study session at the end of the month, and then one more study se, I'm sorry, go ahead, Carl.
The finance doesn't have a meeting set up right now, do we?
No, there is no finance meeting set up.
We'll set up a meeting for this week, see where we're at, and then we'll go from there. And I'll let you know whether we need to, we'll have something before, obviously, next Wednesday, the fourteenth.
Sounds good. All right.
Before we leave, we'll schedule a meeting. Have everybody check their schedules.
Mr. Zuber, you have quite a good.
Just real quick on insurance, property casually, let's do, December one is when it goes over, looking at the different buildings and different valuations. Got a couple calls into them right now. They're rechecking, in fact, today. One is to see how much it would actually cost to increase our insurance on our valuation, I think that's what they're gonna remember, everybody, from right now until that December one hit. And they came back with what I thought was an exorbitant figure, and so now I've got Bushy going back and checking and saying, is that what they're predicting is gonna be for the whole year, or just these two months? You know, right now, I, like, ICRMP, what, that's our carrier, basically, and our total, they put everything together. I mean, like, our property, you know, like inland marine and technology, and everything goes together, so I've got CARRY back at Bushy, trying to pull that apart and see what our buildings were. You know, this is where hopefully everybody got the packet. I think everybody has that now, right? They have the little packet with the pictures of everything and how much all that stuff was. Last year for, for all of ICRMP, I think it was a hundred fifty thousand dollars, someplace in that range on it.
Hundred and thirty-two.
How much?
About a hundred and thirty-two.
About a hundred and forty-eight, but you probably have that.
Well, and that could be the year before. I mean, I'm just.
So, I mean, that's, you know, let's just throw that out there. The figure they came up with originally before coming back, and Travis says he wants to talk to him also, because, you know, it was like, really, it was like over twenty percent of that. And I said, just for these two months, you know, it's gonna be twenty percent of that. And so, he said, no, that doesn't sound right. Maybe there was a mistake in what they thought we were asking for, because if it really is that, then, once we find it out, we have to make some determination on how much percentage maybe we want those to be at, or do we just say, you know what, we want all these buildings at full coverage, but we're gonna have to pay for it.
Is there a thing where we have to be within eighty, eighty-five percent? Is that?
I don't know.
Normally it is, isn't it?
I don't know for sure, but that sounds like that's something that definitely is.
See, I don't know. I don't know that, Jeff. I would just, whenever I, again, I thought it was around a hundred fifty thousand, we've paid for the whole shooting match.
And don't go by the.
And this is, and this is like, just the property itself, you know, like our physical building plant was gonna cost us a lot more just for two months. As Augie talked back and forth, I was glad Augie brought it up to me again and said, like, you think there's, you know, we need to make sure, if we're gonna do this, are we covered right now for those two months? Called back and forth, and called back and forth to the agency, called back and forth with Bushy, and they called back and forth, everybody. So it's, we did a lot of this toward the end of last week. Today's Monday, I got a call in already today, and they said, well, they haven't heard anything back from ICRMP. So they're working on that today to figure that out. As soon as I find out information, I'll let everybody know. So, Jeff, you think there's a, the eighty-five percent of evaluation is standard, is that what you're saying?
Well, you have to be within eighty-five percent in order to be, have coverage, I think, is what I, what I remember when I was involved, but, so, I mean, maybe they're already figuring it that way.
As you saw that, yeah, I was gonna say, as you saw those figures, you know, it went up a lot. The value of our buildings went up a lot because it just hadn't, hadn't been done.
Right.
You know, and so that makes sense, if you're talking about two thousand fifteen prices versus fifteen, twenty years ago, or whatever guesses, you know, because all they did was guess at one time, it was kind of understanding, which would be normal, and then they just added a little bit every year. So, I think that part is all squared away by the, so that'll, that'll be our next thing that we go. Hopefully, they're gonna get renewal bids, or renewals to us pretty quickly here, and we'll also get a chance to look at that, on that whole package. I'm hoping that, that should be within the next week or so, because it was supposed to already be done by now, but ICRMP, I think with, with these add-on of evaluations, then they had to go back and look at that based on those evaluations. Any, anything else on any of that stuff?
Thank you for your work on it. Appreciate it.
We're fine.
Thank you. Derek, have you? I'm getting nothing. One of these days, I'll have something.
Board meeting a week from Wednesday, and obviously, it's, we've been out of, sort of out of balance because of the holiday schedule, with the Monday before the board meeting being Columbus Day. And, have you had a chance to open that?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if that's something you want to.
Is this, is this an airport advisory board meeting on that day, on Columbus Day?
I don't know anything about that.
That would be a scheduled, typical schedule.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, this, let me turn this off for a second. Okay, this is from Ned Jenison, or Jensen, yeah, from the seven oh eight board. He's asking, they've had a vacancy on that board for a while, and they're suggesting that we appoint Dustin Milton. He's a pharmacist and partner at Pierman's to be appointed, and he'd like to see that us act upon that at the next meeting.
Just as a side light, because that's one of my other duties, us on this board, is to be on the seven oh eight board also. Dustin also was heavily involved with the actual human resources board, too. So we have a good working relationship. He's off of that board now.
Right, he can go back on it again for a while.
Right, and he's not on the seven oh eight board, but you have somebody who's interested in working as volunteer work, so to speak, on our seven oh eight. He was on the HRC, two different things totally, okay? Seven oh eight is the money that we put in for county mental health.
Right.
So that was everybody's recommendation. I told Ned, I said, send that along to Jeff, because you gotta get that started, so.
Hearing, you know, any feedback would be appreciated, otherwise it's our intention to put that on the agenda so that we can act upon that at the October meeting.
What is that?
The seven oh eight board?
Seven oh eight, what is it? It's the county mental health board. What it amounts to is, the county gives so much money, or is assessed, it's like an assessment, it's a levy. And then statewide, then you, the county makes a determination on that board, the seven oh eight board, makes a determination on where to spend that money. Ours right now, historically, all goes to Human and Social Center, because that's our major mental facility. And that's separate Clark County. HRC covers, you know, our county in, Clark County. All our money goes is just to help citizens in Nigger County like that. And there'll be a printout on that. It says exactly how much money they get, and you'll actually see what to break that totally down, what all of it was spent for.
So, so I assume it's like the state ordinance?
It's the name, it's just the name of what they give for the county mental health.
Got it.
Is that included somewhere in this? No, is that separate?
That's a separate, it'd be like, not county health board, but kind of, kind of like, this, only this.
Okay, no, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and they'll have a, they'll have a little separate thing, three hundred and fourteen, or probably three hundred and twenty, or twenty-three, whatever it is, and it'll, it'll break it down, what they spend all that amount for.
Their levy this coming year will be four hundred and twenty-four thousand and change. Augie?
Just a reminder, we have ETS board appointments coming up.
Next, next, in the November meeting?
In the November meeting, okay. And then, no, I think it was so, two weeks ago, maybe, I gave you, or I think I emailed out or handed you the holiday schedule for next year. I'll have, I'll have that typed up with the addition of Good Friday, which has been.
Historic.
Historically, that's what the board has done. What else have I gotten here? I did receive a very nice thank you addressed to county board, care of me, from the Paris Ministerial Fellowship, Gary Fairchild, thanking the board for the use of the courthouse lawn for that all-county-wide Bible reading project that they did. So he, he said it was a huge success, and over three hundred county residents participated, so it was very much appreciated. So I have that. I'd be more than happy to pass that around if you gentlemen would like to read that. And I think that's what I have.
Going along with the agenda, some other items, since we're not meeting, and I try to be all-inclusive, but since we're not meeting, so you can see the agenda, we discuss it, we'll also have on there a transfer or two that's made year-end from like the circuit clerk items to the main budget. I don't know whether we'll have any dog funds transferred ready yet, but we'll look at that. Let's see, Augie, is there's anything else on that agenda that we had discussed?
I don't think so. I've got some drainage ditch appointments.
Right.
Which are pretty.
And I hadn't heard anything from anybody on the committee assignments. I'd still like to hear from you if you have any suggestions on what we gave you here a week or so ago. So that will be on there to, to make sure that we discuss at final time and all agree on that formally, okay? As far as the budget, currently, the budget that I handed out today, if you back off the payroll and just consider it a month-end, which would be September month-end, our income is at eighty-three point nine percent, and our expenditures are at seventy-seven point seven percent. And of course, at the end of September, that represents eighty-three point three percent of the year, so we're right on target as far as income, and we're a little under on expenses. But remember, we're gonna be catching up a little bit, not because of Andy, but because of the work that we're doing on the courthouse. So we're assuming that we'll be billed, hopefully, before the end of the fiscal year, which ends November thirtieth.
So on this, Jeff, this, this really isn't the end of, that's what I was trying, the end of October. We haven't been able to guess that out there.
No, I'm actually creating, I'm thinking that that's the end of September.
Okay, that's right.
I'm treating that as the end of September and backing out that eighty-some thousand that we've spent so far this month. So I backed that out, and those are the figures I'm giving.
So this, instead of out there where it says October thirty-first, you're going September thirtieth.
Right, and I just kind of took liberty there. But that's the easiest way to look at it, because it'd be hard to suppose what, where we're gonna be at the end of the month. We have like three payrolls this month, and, you know, there's other things going on that we need to consider. As far as the new budget, we'll wait to see what the sheriff's committee will do, but we have fine-tuned some items and expenses for administration. For example, I was able to sit down with Terry and refine health insurance a little more closely, and taking into account a worst possible on, on some other things. And we're saving an additional sixteen thousand here and five thousand here. We also found some more income that's, that's provable to the tune of about nineteen thousand. And so, you know, all those things go together and help the picture, so. At any rate, we'll, we'll try to get you a draft copy, all up to date, if the sheriff's committee can get that to me in time, so you'll have it at the next meeting. I've also got, Carl asked me, well, you all asked me, to, to look at what a percent increase would mean. Fifty-two hundred and thirty-four dollars each percent, okay? Fifty-two hundred and thirty-four dollars. So I thankfully was too high, so that's taking into account everybody that hadn't increased their budget and dropping out the union, which is handled separately. And that's already in the budget. Jeff already included his increases in the budget. So everybody that wasn't included in the budget that you looked at, a percent would be fifty-two hundred and thirty-four dollars, okay? Was that clear as mud?
It was a three or three and a half percent that already went out.
It was a three or three and a half percent that already went out, is it an offer made about?
Three.
Well, that was personal.
No, that wasn't.
Yeah, right, that wasn't.
That wasn't our offer.
Right, right.
That's, yeah, we, we don't wanna be talking about that in that meeting, okay? But that, that, those figures thrown out are not correct, okay?
So you're fifty-two thirty-four, just like I'm having my brain again?
Yeah, right.
That's not counting anything dealing with negotiations?
No.
Cause that's already, cause I figured it was a different budget.
That's in, that's already in the budget. Uh, we had a couple of departments that already included, uh, their increases. And I don't have to mention what those are. But those I did not include because that's already in the budget.
When we, when we stabilized our health insurance, you said you, you looked at that and that...
Has gone down.
That'll go down just basically, right?
Right.
Once, cause that's all flatlined.
Right. And, you know, and looking at what, how the, the unions, you know, worst possible on the unions, okay? So it's taking all that into consideration. So it could get better, but at this point, it's best to be cautious.
Are we going to complete negotiations with sheriff deputies before we start the negotiations with dispatchers?
Probably not.
Is there a contract at the same time that, that is?
Matter of fact, I got a letter this morning. It's from the union office and I don't, I'm guessing that's probably from the second union. The dispatcher and jaders wanting to get something started, so I talked to him a couple of weeks ago.
That'll be with Mark? Is that from Mark?
I, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to open it and...
That's fine.
See who it was from. But I'm assuming that's probably...
You've got a letter from Mark, don't you, that we need to sign and send back?
Yes, we got something in, uh, yeah, in email or mail?
Mail. And doesn't he usually send you that letter, same letter he sends me usually too, don't they?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, are there any, uh, is there any need for an exec session today? Is there any concerns that a board member might have? Or, well, I'm sorry, I forgot myself. Jeff, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Is there anything else that a board member might wanna bring up that, yes?
Uh, when do the appointments for the nine-one-one board?
They'll be, they'll be handled at the regular meeting in November.
I had a person on the board mention something about it, so what the concern is?
So we weren't planning on discussing anything with the levy issue. I know I, that email went out with the three documents.
Oh, absolutely, yes, are we, yes. It's the drugs, man. Yes, that's a, that is a big item. So Augie did send out that information at the end of last week. So we've had a chance to look at that some more. That should probably be the next, last item on the agenda. So I'll leave it up to you for discussion.
Well, I sent it upstairs to Mark also. I hope you hear.
The issue of the ambulance, basically the special cert, not the ambulance, the special service. And I think that's a, that's a key thing to look at. I think that's a little bit different because I think the way our old county board did that, they did it obviously as a special service arrangement, not as an ambulance tax. I think there's a difference based, or not.
There is.
There's a difference based on what I read of the ones with the state, which you can qualify and not qualify because it's almost... I, I read that anyway and that's a good thing to have Mark look at, obviously. But I think, looked like the old time county board went right off that sheet, their wording, like the, for example, they have the fifty-one percent of the people, if they don't want it, they need to come to this and present a petition, et cetera, et cetera. And that's what it says on that special services, so... Sounds like they, they took the page right out of what you sent us, so...
Coming in.
Hey, is this, is, are we gonna try to discuss some of this now or are you just gonna wait until?
Well, I thought we oughta have a chance to air concerns.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we have to wait for, I mean, ultimately, it'd be nice to hear from Mark before we make any final... Uh, uh, my big thing is that, you know, we've been given to believe that it's twenty cents per hundred. And if there's, we need to know whether that's right, wrong, or, or whatever, so...
It was interesting how it was written, so when it was presented, it was written one way, the maximum with no, um, any other wording to amplify. And then the actual ordinance that was passed had the, you know, first time, it had a little more wiggle room in it. And then, so I think what you were saying was that third, the Illinois rules levies, I don't have any of that here, so I'm gonna pull it up, was saying that, um, you could levy for the special ambulance service as long as there wasn't, or special, yeah. As long as you didn't have an ambulance levy for the fire.
Well, see, that's what they, they, I think they bypassed that. That's what I'm saying, and that's why I'm curious about Mark. That was the part because they didn't call it an ambulance, I don't think. They went with the special service part, that's why I'm curious to see what Mark says, but I know exactly. Cause you look at it right off the bat, it says, yeah, it says ambulance, you can't do it if there's already a fire, a fire district that is charging, the way I read it, a fire district, basically that's also assessing a part of that for their ambulance service?
Yeah, well, you can read that a couple ways, right?
Right, and then you go on damn farther and it was like...
You're like, I'm pulling up.
They, uh, I don't know, that's why I say Mark probably needs to look at that as much as anybody else.
Then in, let's see, in the service contract that we're operating under, it makes reference to that also, I believe, so...
Like under ambulance services, it says point two-five, may be levied only in an area not within a fire protection district which levies an ambulance tax. I have no idea if any of those are in a fire protection district that levy a part, that an ambulance tax. I would assume they don't, but they may. But then, when you, when you get right down to it, in my mind, that's why I want Mark to do that, special service areas. This is, there's no rate limit. To provide special services to a part of a county, tax it, you know, to a part of a county, which that's what we have, seven townships. So the county can make a deal just for special services. And it says, to provide special services to a part of the county, tax imposed only in special service area, may not be imposed if objection is filed by fifty-one percent of electors and fifty-one percent of the landowners. And that, that to me sounds like that's what they did. Cause if part of that other part reads that exact quote.
That exact word. The, the ordinance from the mid-eighties when they established it.
Right. So that's what I'm, I'm thinking, they didn't wanna mess with an ambulance part just in case there was gonna be some fire district that sometimes says, okay, we're gonna take over the ambulance part or assess for an ambulance part, so...
Now, when you, when you're saying that, does, are you referring to the, are they, or is that referring to the county or is that referring to the, the individual township?
The county, the county can spec, can establish, help me out on that. It's, the county can establish special service areas. And they can actually do that, like if, if I almost read that correctly. Uh, let's say there are four townships out there that really want a certain type of road and they all agree to it and they do that. They can come to the county and for whatever amount of time, you can, in the county's best interest of those four townships or special area, whatever it is, they can all sign this little code and, or the county can sign off on it. And if you don't have fifty-one percent of the people object to it, electors and fifty-one percent of the landowners. So by that and, that's another great legal thing. It says, may not be imposed if objection petition is filed by fifty-one percent of electors and fifty-one percent of landowners. So I, I'm guessing that's, you guys were back there dealing with it a lot more than I was. I'm sure part of that was like, we've had so much fun with this ambulance stuff, nothing seems to be working right. We've got seven townships that say, we want ambulance largely, which being Paris. And so they said, okay, we can do that under forty ILCS five slash twenty-one dash one-ten, five slash twenty-one, one-ten point one, you know, cause it's quoted in there, so, is that?
That's the way I read it.
Yeah.
So you said that there's no limit, there's no...
Right.
That's what this is, but now, on our actual ordinance, if I read it correctly, I mean, it, it actually says, just like you're saying, on that one part, it says it's gonna be twenty cents.
Did it say shell or maybe, remember how to play on leverage?
Yeah, I did in twenty-five two.
I said, that's what they were saying, on one part it says it's gonna be... When they set up the ordinance, the court actually passed the law, it was a more strict wording.
Because if, with what they've asked, i- if we're somehow tied to the twenty cents, then there's, you know, I need to know what we need to make the levy for because we could be challenged for it if we're not correct, so...
Well, yeah, there may not be a need to, we may not have any ability to do it.
Right, that's what I, you know, and, and if, you know, we can put in there any amount we want, but we're only gonna get X amount. Or if it's the other way, then we can put in what we, what we feel is justified as a board.
Well, and just kinda my thought process going through this was, initially, I'm like, well, it's, it's never been raised, you know, things could do get more expensive, not counting in, uh, you know, the Affordable Health Care Act. But, you know, at the same time, property values did increase, so there has been a steady increase over time as well. So, you know, to that, I don't know if...
Well, the property values increase, twenty cents per hundred dollars, so property values go up.
Then that, so is theirs, right?
But I guess I understood it that night, they were reading it last Wednesday, in the first year. But this says the maximum rate of taxes to be extended in any year.
Okay, but here you go, part three, Andy. This is on the actual thing that was attached. Edgar County Special Service Area number one is established to provide ambulance service to said area, but it's still not called an ambulance tax. It just says, that's a, said area is also created so that taxes may be levied and extended upon all property within, at a maximum rate for the first year of twenty cents per hundred assessed valuation. And that's what you're, that's, that's the discrepancy part.
So, well, and then, so levied and extended, what does extended mean in that case? Does it mean that you can increase it or it means that levy continues throughout years?
Or me, on my mind, it says for the first year.
Right.
Levied and paid out.
Yeah.
And I think just because historically, that's just what they just kept it there.
So there's, it would be nice to get someone who is versed in legalese to actually tell us what that is all saying because it seems to me like there's, you can make a case either way.
They asked for a five percent increase on the amount they got last year, if that was what they're asking for. So it's three hundred and seven thousand, five percent.
It was about three hundred and nineteen thousand.
They want five percent more on that. Is that gonna come from a tax or where it comes from?
A tax, we would increase the levy.
I thought it was to the June sixteen thousand dollars was the increase, I would bring that over here.
So I guess we're looking for you to get some information from our state's attorney and our legal advisor. And then disseminate that information as soon as you give it to all of the board members so that they can come up with what they feel is the best judgment. And then we can deal with it before the end of the month, okay?
Does that earn actual deadline?
Yeah, we have to have the levy ready by the first meeting in November, okay? And that's the only thing that's hanging out there at this point. That and having a better, better idea on tort and what else do we have?
Insurance, elected officials.
Right, tort, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, you're, you're, you're correct, and, and if it gets out of hand...
Insurance on our property cash, I mean, right?
Right.
That's all I'm hearing, I think that's it.
Yeah, yeah. Tort kinda catches it all. I should've been more explicit.
Just so that they know, everyone knows that's where it comes.
It's a levy function.
As far as the ambulance, one of my concerns is when they made the presentation the other day, they showed like their operating budget over a million dollars. Well, that's to have five ambulances, you know, they've got fourteen people. You know, they, that ambulance service does more than what's just in providing the ambulance service that this was originally established for. You know, they're doing transfers, my understanding, they maybe are talking about having an ambulance over in Indiana, covering Indiana people. So, you know, when you look at that, a million some dollars, that's not their cost for just the contract we have, you know?
Well, right, that was my problem, like, these numbers don't jive, like, what's, and so, and then I was told, hey, this is, you know, private business, which makes sense. So we have, I mean, I guess we have to kinda come to our decision outside of the presentation and figure out, you know, what, what's right, what's fair because we probably won't get the information, we need to actually make a, you know, actuarial or not, or a, you know, a mathematical decision. It's gonna be kinda more of a...
The only thing you might be able to do in the future is ask them for costs assigned to operate the contract. That I think you might be able to get, and I think it's a little late in the game probably to get that dissected for this year. But I think in fairness, we should be able to get, have an idea of what it's costing them to operate in the seven townships.
I appreciate you saying that, Jeff, that's kind of my line of thinking. Unless we can see, based on the contract, what that really is. How many times does it take four ambulances or three ambulances to operate within those seven townships when we've only asked for two, or these guys originally only asked for two? I think that's an issue. Or like when we were saying, how many of those times when they move the people on Medicaid, that they're not getting reimbursed within those seven townships? Because we may find out that it's a lot more than three hundred and nineteen thousand and then that's really justifiable. And if it's not, well, you know, then it's not, then I think goes back to your issue of like, they're doing a lot more. Nothing wrong with that, they are in private business, right? Go after it. But are we taking care of our county's needs? So I think that, I mean, that, that's one of the reasons why a couple of years ago, being on the seven oh eight board, not a big deal, even not being on this board, I asked Ken to put out a sheet, says, okay, you get this many hundreds of thousands of dollars. Where exactly is that being spent for Edgar County?
Well, the reality...
And it all breaks it down in Edgar County.
Well, the reality is, you've levied only for these townships though.
Correct.
Even though you may say the whole county, if, if, if you're, if you're doing the whole county, then maybe there needs to be some discussion on whether other townships would like to be in that. And that would bring, without raising a levy, by adding another township. And didn't someone say that a couple people had asked?
Northern Edward County.
Yeah, Northern Edward County had asked.
I think Edgar Township, which is a whole different thing than Northern Edgar County.
Right.
There's been a lot of discussion about that though.
Another thing that they, they said or said, that since 2014, because of the contract, they've had an additional two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in expense. What's, I don't wonder, I guess I didn't ask that question, but I got to think about that later. How would, just because of the contract, there be a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase in the last year? I don't know why, the contract was never changed.
I, I didn't hear that call.
Yeah, it's on, at the bottom of the thing, it showed two hundred, actually turned fourteen or fifteen, I think that's what it was.
Did they go through a audit?
Unless they have one done personally, there's nothing in the contract that, that really provides that we get answers to anything like this, okay?
Right, and I guess initially for me, um, that's a good discussion. I, I looked at, the, the townships went together, the county said, okay, we have a need for a special service. Everybody agreed that it was twenty cents. Personally, I have no problem with that being twenty cents. Because that's what was agreed to, that's what they bought into, that's what they had.
Right.
If it's anything more than that, then personally, if it's legal even, I'm, I would have to see justification. The twenty cents, I feel almost is like, that's what they signed on to, that's what they agreed, whether it's Augie or anybody, Andy, Jeff, you or I, we have that, if we sign into that, that's what we know we're getting, the twenty cents, in my mind. Now, anything above that, I would, I would like to see some justification. More so than, this is how much more it's costing us, I'd like to see justification within those seven townships, make that even more visible.
Well, you might, Ron was saying that the people of those townships never, never actually voted on this in the first place, right? It was the county or the, their representatives said, hey, we want this, and how that went.
I imagine they published that they were gonna have a, they were gonna have a meeting, what would you call it, a?
They had a hearing, public hearing.
A hearing, public hearing, and where everybody could present their views. And I assume at that point, everybody was pretty much together on it.
Right, and then, no, there was, well, yeah.
Couldn't get fifty-one percent to say no.
Well.
Right, well.
Backward, backward.
Right, well. Right, but the other side of that is, if truly there have been a prominence of people that did not want this, my guess you could've popped up fifty-one percent of those elector, because the people elector, historically, those are the people who vote. If they really don't want something, they're gonna come out, that's not, you know, and fifty-one percent of the landowners, let's face it, if I'm a landowner in Edgar County, I'm pretty vocal about my taxes all the time.
The only thing I've heard, and I mean, I think since we've decided, or had them at our meeting, my question to you is, have you heard much? The only thing I've heard is from Edgar and up in that area, is they're not interested, they've got, they've got a few people that always have, that are, might be disgruntled. And they don't want to be part of us, they've got a board up there, it's operating fine, or the people up there are fine with it, so. That has generated all that I've heard. I haven't heard anybody say, you can't have, give them another sixteen or two, or they shouldn't be, I haven't heard nothing, so.
In my mind, it seems like a bit of a slipper slip, things that you said, you know, and we've talked about, you know, no one actually voted on this except for, no one voted to dissent against it, right? And so now we're saying, hey, let's go ahead and raise that because they've shown us on their PowerPoint, the numbers they chose to show us, well, that's fine. But if we're gonna start making decisions for those people as a board, then I wanna have a lot more information, and I don't think we can do that. So I guess my position going in with what information I have now is just to say, leave it as is. If they want to change it, either we have, A, vote, some set up some sort of vote for the people to decide, hey, we wanna raise it for ourselves, or B, write up a new contract when that is available, and say, hey, if you want money and us available, able to raise taxes for you, we need to see more transparency in your books.
Well, we know budget, you can hide money in a budget, I mean, budget is a guide, right?
What are you saying?
I'd like to see.
He looked right at you when he said it, Jeff.
I'd like to see an actual, what they spend the money for. I mean, it's an actual service.
Or that seven townships.
Well, yeah, I'd like to see where the, I mean, something, where are their calls? I mean, where, what are the areas that they're going to?
Well, so the next step is to hear from, what do you think?
I think we need to leave it like it is.
I agree too, I agree.
But regardless of that fact, we need to have some information from the state's attorney. I think we're all generating a position, which is good, and hopefully there's some consensus here and then we'll, we'll, we'll deal with it.
People from the, from those areas where the taxes levy, do they, are they at a lower rate of charge when they get?
I doubt it, cause that's what you're paying for.
I realize that, that's what I'm paying for, but somebody else from another one.
Oh, I got your outside of that, I thought you meant, you would get a discount if you live inside of it, no. I would sooner, I don't, I don't know.
I bet you don't.
Because it's, well, because the other part of, yeah, you are, but the other side of that is, if you don't have it, then you don't have it. This says, in my mind, somebody's coming to get me. If I'm outside this area, they make no promise.
If you wanna pay, you gotta pay, so, I don't know. I, I, that's why I'd kinda like to know, hey, they may be going fifty percent outside those areas, then we don't need to pass a levy in those areas to take care of that.
That's a separate issue, you know, if the other areas are underserved and are poor, then how do we fix that as a county?
Well, I think you've heard Kirk say in Kansas that when theirs aren't able to take care of them, they automatically take.
Right.
And I don't know how it works up north, I'm assuming it's the same way.
It certainly seemed to be to.
Right. Okay? All right.
Is there something we need to talk about there? That's what you missed, son.
Yeah. I missed it too, so don't feel too bad. You missed the rolling bridge.
Get the memo.
There wasn't, there wasn't any now, or she. I, I think it bears, it does bear repeating that, you know, we hear rumors and the rumor mill has it that there may be layoffs or so forth at the highway department. I mean, I think it bears, I, I talked to our engineer and he assures me like he assured us a week, week and a half ago, whenever it was we met, that, that they're fine. Everything's fine for at least twelve months. They don't foresee any layoffs or anything along those lines at this point, okay? There's nothing contemplated. Hopefully, the state government can reach some agreements and things can happen, you know, on a positive note, much before we get to a year. Can't imagine that it would go another year, but I guess it could. But I think it just bears repeating that there are no layoffs planned at the highway department.
Somebody asked the sheriff department this morning, layoffs at the sheriff department.
Did somebody ask me about it?
Asked me about it, yeah.
Oh.
I said, four is a no, no.
The old classic response for everything, only time will tell.
At this current point, we're still receiving funds from all of our major state funding except for the things that reimburse us, like the state's attorney, the supervisory assessment and so forth. We're not receiving anything for those, but we are receiving all the other tax laws, okay? All right, gentlemen, hearing nothing else, if I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, yeah.
Second, second?
Right, sir.
Second. All those in favor signify this, ain't I?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you all.